Thank you, attention please, we'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Monday, May 2, 2022. The first matter on the agenda this evening would be the approval of the April 21, 2022 minutes. Anybody have any comment, corrections? Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. The minutes are approved. Moving along, we have a continued public hearing, a site plan review and a special permit, 733-735 Broadway Street. Boston Capital has applied to the Lowell Planning Board and Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for a site plan review, special permit and variance approval to redevelop the existing historic building at the above address into 53 affordable units. The project includes the redevelopment of the existing structure as well as the construction of an addition to include additional housing, a management office and parking. The subject property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district. The project requires site plan review approval per Section 11.4 and special permit approval per Section 4.5 from the Lowell Planning Board. May we hear the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just want to note also that Attorney Kevin Murphy, representing the Lowell Housing Authority, is here. I saw him come up. I think he's just next door for a minute, so I think he'll be joining the meeting. But just a brief update, since we were here last, we made some modifications to the plans in response to comments primarily from the peer review of the traffic study. One of the comments had to do with the parking area aisle widths, and I think the direction from the board was to go back and try to create something that is consistent with the zoning requirements, which we have done, and resubmitted those plans. Another area that was of concern was the area on Ting Street. There was a comment from the fire department that we provide a 40-foot no-turn area so that fire trucks could better access the site. That is shown on the revised plan as well. In addition to, and there were comments from the Housing Authority at the last meeting that there are 16 spaces that they want reserved for their use. Those do fit and are shown on the revised drawing, and the applicant is certainly amenable to a condition where we would reserve those spaces, those parking spaces, for the exclusive use of the Lowell Housing Authority. And then the last item, I think, to mention is the road safety audit. That also was suggested in the peer review of the traffic study, and the applicant has agreed to commission that audit and implement the short-term measures that are recommended as a result of that audit. With me tonight is Rich Mizaki from Boston Capital, Brian Goodrow from Hancock Associates, and we have two architects, I believe, from Davis Square that are on Zoom. So I think we've addressed the concerns that were raised at the last meeting. I know the Housing Authority submitted four proposed conditions. We're agreeable to all those. We're agreeable to the conditions that were in the staff memo as well. And really, we're just here to see if the board has additional questions, and we have the architects and engineers and developer here to answer those.
Could you just show us the new plan on how Ting Street's going to work? I know the big, we had a lot of concern on that last time, and that's why we had to wait for the letter from the fire department. So I believe the fire department, and I know you have a copy of it, indicated a minimum of 40 no-parking zone on Ting Street from Broadway Street intersection. And if we can see where that 40 no-parking will be and as well as where the parking spots that would be agreed to have for the Housing Authority.
Sure, sure. Do we have the ability to pull up the plan on the screen?
Would you be able to pull that that we have on the screen?
Or if not, do the board members have copies of it? Do you have copies?
I think we did receive a updated copy recently. But sometimes it's nice to see it on the screen and walk through it. We do have a tablet here, though.
But Brian Goodrow from Hancock can walk you through what the changes and improvements are.
Sure, if you could. Can you see this as well, Richard?
I can see it.
Yeah. Yeah, because I remember that's where we basically left off at the last meeting, was waiting to hear what we heard from the fire department. So obviously, we had a lot of discussion on that, so just wanted to see how that's been implemented.
Good evening. For the record, Brian Goodrow with Hancock Associates. So Sheet 3 of the plan set contains two kind of viewports. On the left-hand side, it's our grading, drainage and utilities. Right-hand side is the layout.
Sure, if you could counsel.
Yeah, I have another copy here.
I had the, and we get the small ones when I tried to print them at very hot times. You know, we get a little one, and we're like, okay, let me just see if we can. Yeah.
So Sheet 3, if you look at the intersection of Ting Street, bottom right-hand corner of the plan, intersection of Ting and Broadway, what we've done is we've created a landscape island at that intersection to shelter the 16 spaces for the Housing Authority on the left-hand side. The no-parking area is the first 40 feet of Ting Street. So as you're kind of coming down Ting towards Broadway, there's a 40-foot striped area that will also have no-parking signage associated before the stop sign and stop bar. So that's the area the fire department was in question to make sure that they could take a right hand down Ting Street to access the Housing Authority property.
Sue, can I just have a question on that? Because that's what I was trying to, and looking at that. And I think really, we were hoping to get additional comments from the fire department as a result of the new plans. But if you can walk me through, I'm trying to understand, the landscape island and the sidewalk, if I look at now how far that jets out compared to the prior plan, it's just as far, it looks a little farther out than the parking spaces. Sue, I mean, from my mind, I know one of the concerns, I guess, the fire department had if cars were parked there, but you're coming out just as far, if not further, than if cars were parked in that location.
Correct. So the point of the landscape island is to restrict that parking. So the drive aisle of Ting Street is 22 feet. That's two-way traffic. The kind of project side of Ting Street, the left-hand side of the road as you're coming in, is going to have striping on the pavement as well as no-parking signs. And their concern was that if a vehicle was parked kind of in the swath of pavement that exists today, they wouldn't be able to negotiate a turn heading west down Broadway Street, taking a right onto Ting. With this layout, they can do that.
So if I can ask, Serena, have we received any comments from the fire department with the revised plan?
Not that I'm aware of.
So there was an email that went to both us and DPD that saw this revised plan, and they said they were all set.
And I sent an email to DPD asking if they could send to the fire department and have comments for tonight's meeting. And no response.
Did you email Fran? Was that who it was?
Okay.
I was just asking if you emailed Fran.
I emailed Dylan.
Oh, okay.
Over the weekend, when I was reading everything, yeah, on Saturday. And I know he was in today because he responded to us on a few things, but I sent it out. I believe I was reading the plans on Saturday, and I tried to send it to him. Because from the prior plan, you've narrowed that entrance.
And we've also eliminated the conflict that the fire department was concerned about, which is that par is kind of parked in the area that they're parking in right now, unstriped, just the swath of pavement.
So is it expected that the truck might dry over the curb?
No. So as a part of the sweep path analysis, that's how we determine curb cut radius at the intersection as well as pavement width, so they can negotiate this turn.
Now, do we have a sweep path analysis with this new configuration?
Not in the plan set, no.
I didn't see anything. Okay, so I'll move along with the public hearing, and we'll come back to any board comments. Anything further, Attorney Martin, on behalf of the applicant? I know Counselor Murphy has stepped in. It'd like to be heard.
Thank you very much. It's, we've been working very well with the petitioner relative to the issues that we have. And at the last meeting, Mr. Chairman and members, is that the issue came up about the 40-foot no-parking. And I had an engineer go up there on behalf of the Housing Authority. And even with the 40-foot no-parking zone on the left side of Ting Street, is that we can still fit in the 16 parking spots that we've had there. So we are satisfied with the 40-foot no-parking zone on the left side of Ting Street. We are still asking for the four conditions that we had previously requested. The first one being that the 16 parking spaces be reserved for the Lowell Housing Authority. And if they do construct a new fence, they will put up the appropriate signage indicating that those 16 spaces are reserved for the Lowell Housing Authority employees. Second is that construction will not commence until 8:00 a.m. rather than the 7:00 a.m. allowable zoning start time. The third is that Ting Street is going to be a private way and not used for the residents of this new development. And fourth, that the applicant agrees that no college or graduate student housing will be allowed on the premises. But we've had a great opportunity working with the petitioner, and we're going to be able to fill in those 16 parking spaces even with the 40-foot no-parking. So we're very satisfied with the petition as long as these four conditions are included.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members.
Anybody this evening here like to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none at this time. Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? Hearing none at this time. I'll turn it over to any board members for the questions.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just.
Sure, Mr. President.
If you could also just go over the, I know a little bit of a challenge, increasing the length of the parking spots, and it looks like you've kind of jet out just a little bit from the building. Can you explain a little bit how you're handling that, look at the plan?
Are we referencing on Ting Street?
No, actually, the parking spots under the building.
Okay.
Where, it looks like on both sides, when I look at the prior plan.
Yep. So to walk you through the kind of dimensional layout of the parking garage, it wasn't actually the length of the spaces that was in question, it was the drive aisle. We had a 20-foot.
Correct, correct, yes.
We had a 20-foot drive aisle, and we now have a 22-foot. And we did that by changing the footprint of the building.
Right.
So if you look at kind of these little bump outs, they were more pronounced in the previous version of the plan. So the building, the actual building width, less the facade elements, got wider by two feet.
And does that change, you had the kind of open space area, what did that do for that particular area?
It did slightly reduce the usable open space kind of on the left-hand side, you know, a foot or so. But we still fall within the ratios that we had applied for variance from with the ZBA.
And if I'm reading the plan small, and we had the revised plan, it seems to me it says remove fence. So is the fence going to still be up along Ting Street? What is happening there?
No, there will be no fence on Ting Street. To create the Housing Authority parking spaces, there was about 16 feet of pavement. So what we did is we actually took the sidewalk and moved it a little bit closer to the building. So it'll be parking spaces, sidewalk, a small landscape area, and then the building.
So how will the signage then be addressed?
The signage is in, are we talking about reserved parking for Housing Authority or no?
Right, correct.
So the reserved parking for Housing Authority signage will either be in that small landscape area directly adjacent to the building. It's about three feet wide. It'll be on the far side of the sidewalk or on the building proper. I don't know how historical feel about that, though.
Yeah, they may have something to say about that.
They might.
Yeah. So if that's not the case, will they be posts up?
There'll be posts, yeah, posts and signs.
You know what that starts to look like when you, first plow job?
Well, it's behind the sidewalk. And I'm sure Rich has every confidence in his management company to make sure that it's maintained appropriately.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lockhart, any questions?
I just have one question. Could you clarify and review the fire department's comments and their findings?
Sure. So the fire department primarily had one comment, and their comment was the first 40 feet of Ting Street, that parking be restricted so that they had unfettered access, if you will. So our kind of realignment of Ting Street, we created that 40-foot no-parking area.
What about the turning radius of equipment? Is that?
Yep, it's adequate.
It was adequate. And they stated that. I don't remember seeing it, unless it's by them. Okay, thank you.
Anything, no, okay. Caleb, any questions or comments?
I was looking at the viewing plan as well, and I noticed there are some compact parkings. Just wondering if, like, you know, that might be smaller than the requirement with of the parking spaces, or how do you navigate the requirement, the city requirement with that?
Yes, so compact spaces are seven and a half feet by 18 feet. And we received that as part of the relief with the ZBA.
Oh, okay, I see. Thank you.
Yep.
I probably just forgot after a while.
No problem.
And I think I just want to make the comment that, like, I appreciate the applicants willing us to, to work with the city to suggest kind of a solution to road safety audit on the intersection. So that's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Malvich, I know you joined us on Zoom. You have any questions or comments, Bob?
I have a couple of questions. How long is the affordability on this project?
Did you catch that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can respond to that. The affordability restriction is 15 years.
Okay, what's your attitude about how long you're going to keep it affordable?
And if I could correct that, actually, the low-income housing tax credit period is 15 years. The affordability period is a minimum of 30 years.
Okay. Have you gone to the ZBA yet?
Yes, we have, and we received approval in December.
Okay, we're approved. Stormwater approval? Is that near complete?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
Thank you, his question about the stormwater approval.
Not at this point.
But you have been talking to them.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that question.
What was that last comment?
You are talking to them, though.
I'm sorry, Bob, it's not coming over too well.
Oh. Are you talking to them?
Yes. So in reference to the stormwater, back in December before we, or concurrent with our filing, we talked to the city's stormwater management team, Mike Stewart, Lowell Regional Wastewater, and his staff, walked them through our approach. We gave them full access to designs and calculations, and we had a series of back and forth. And the plan that you see, or the calculations supporting the plan that you see, have been approved by the stormwater management team.
Okay, thank you. I too want to congratulate you for doing the road safety audit. And the timeline seems to be okay for that, at 50%. That's great. I'm excited about the project. As long as we can keep enough affordable housing in Lowell, we'll be fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. I don't have any comments at this time. My comment, I think I addressed when we started the presentation about what the fire department's thing. The concern was, so one of my concerns was, obviously, if we give an approval tonight, I'd like to make sure that the fire department has a chance to look over the new plan.
Right.
Because that was the contention that we dealt with last time. So, and hopefully they could take a look at that, and hopefully they'll be satisfied with what the situation has improved now.
Chairman?
Yes, Caleb.
Just to the board, as I, I think I remember we mentioned about traffic, post-occupancy traffic study in the last discussion.
Yes, so, that would be the road safety audit.
That is the road safety audit?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, and they agreed to comply with part of the road safety audit with the letter that we received from Attorney Martin on number four on the bottom, or number three, yeah, as highlighted.
Right.
Right.
Attorney Martin, can I just, a question for you. On the letter from staff regarding the transportation demand management plan, what they were proposing, have you, from A through F, have you looked at that? Is that, just want to make sure we're all on the same page with that. Staff is specifically mentioning components of that, that I just want to make sure that that's what we're.
Yes, so we've had our engineering company look at that, tack and gut preliminary cost estimates. But the commitment, I think, was to design and construct the short-term improvements identified as an outcome. So, so yes, we're committed to do that work.
Okay, so that would be item, item nine from the staff commitment letter, page three, item nine on the staff letter dated March 30. I just want to make sure we're looking at the same thing. The transportation demand management plan. The applicant will improve sidewalk infrastructure on the property's frontage, improving connectivity to nearby LRT bus stop. The applicant will include interior bike storage and secured room, providing one bike storage per unit. The applicant should provide external bike racks for visitors. Public transportation scheduled with transit map for LRT and MBTA. Commuter rail will provided to residents who will be posted in the lobby. Local transportation options will be marketed to residents. The proposed loading drop-off area can be used as a ride-share service pickup drop-off location. On-site laundry and amenities will reduce vehicle trips by allowing residents to complete certain errands without leaving the property. I just want to make sure that that's.
That's all contemplated in the plan, yes. We agree to that, yes.
Well, we make that a condition as part of that, okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions on the board?
I have none.
Okay. So we, the applicant is looking for relief for site plan as well as a special permit from the planning board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit with the following conditions. The applicant, I'll be, should say, the proposal is subject to approval by the city's stormwater management team. Also, approval by the city's fire department. The applicant shall include a transportation demand management plan incorporating items A through F from staff memo dated March 30, 2022. Final approval is subject to staff. The applicant should work with Mass DCR to determine suitable locations and tree types for the property and work with DCR to plant the trees. Final landscape plans subject to staff approval. Following conditions as agreed upon by applicant in Lowell Housing Authority. If everybody's acceptable, saying conditions one through four rather than reading it into the record. Okay. And the applicant, and really, again, I And really, I, again, I, you made it a lot easier, Counselor, by coming back and really satisfying the traffic recommendations from the peer review. Uh, the applicant agrees to conduct a road safety audit with, um, the conditions that the RSA will be undertaken prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the project. And the intersection improvements shall be completed prior to achieving fifty percent occupancy, subject to receipt of any and all necessary rights, permits, and approvals. The applicant intends to engage the, um, will be engaging their, their engineering firm, Engineering Corp. Tech, for the RSA. The applicant ensures and will permit resident parking for one parking space per unit. Think, Mr. Chairman, that incorporates the conditions. That's it, Mr. Chairman? That's part of the transportation demand management plan, yes.
Okay. If there's any question that came up, I, I was just asking Mr. Fichette with, for the sidewalks. I know they requested that they be city-standard, and he said that was incorporated by the transportation demand management plan. So when it says improve the sidewalk, that's included, so that would be by city standard. Correct?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, you want to amend that, because I believe it does not say city standards on item A.
Yeah, if you want to amend that.
We can amend that, sure. We amend that.
To city standards?
To city standards, yes.
Pro sidewalk construction to city standards?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Fichette with several conditions. I think I added up six of them.
Six, yeah. I'll second the motion.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, the special permit has been approved. Five in favor and zero against. Now we need a vote for the site plan. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan incorporating the conditions set forth in the special permit. Motion made by Mr. Fichette to approve the special permit with the same conditions as outlined in the special permit.
Oh, second.
I'll second.
Second, second by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes yes. Hearing any opposition? Hearing none. That motion is approved as well. Good luck, gentlemen. Your site plan and special permit have been approved. Good night. Thank you very much.
Roger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you very much. Good luck. I know the people at the food pantry are going to be very happy. Okay, moving along in the agenda, we have, um, Pawtucket Boulevard Market Basket Traffic Study update. On November fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, DMSVLD, Inc., received plan and board approval to construct a seventy-one thousand square foot Market Basket retail location, a twenty-two thousand square foot adjacent commercial space, and a twenty-six hundred square foot drive-through restaurant. For the conditions of approval, the applicant is required to implement a traffic monitoring program with evaluation beginning six months after the issuance of the certificate of occupancy and continue at a one-year and then annually ending after five years. This traffic report considers the period of a one-year post-occupancy. Hello.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Kathleen Keane, the traffic engineer with VHB for the Market Basket Development. Um, I am joined by my colleague, Rob Nagy, also with VHB. Um, and we also have Jim Lamp from Market Basket, um, I believe, on the line. He was hoping to be here in person, but unfortunately, has COVID. So I can run through a summary of the monitoring effort, um, and then I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. Um, so as you referenced, as a condition of approval, we're required to complete a monitoring program at six months, which we had already done, and then at the one-year mark. So that's the current monitoring effort that's documented in the latest memo that was shared with city staff. Um, there are also two other conditions, essentially reviewing some operations at one of the driveways on Old Ferry, um, as well as a review of U-turns at Pawtucket Boulevard and the Old Ferry intersection. So as part of the monitoring effort, we conducted traffic counts in January at each of the site driveways during the weekday and weekend. Um, so a Thursday and a Saturday, we conducted daily counts as well as counts during the weekday evening peak period and then the Saturday midday peak period. Um, we also looked at intersections, three other intersections, Old Ferry at Pawtucket, Pawtucket at the Rourke Bridge, and Old Ferry up at Varnum itself. Um, after reviewing the traffic counts at the driveways, um, we compared the traffic that the project's actually generating to what we had estimated as part of the traffic studies prior to construction of the project. Um, that comparison shows that, um, the, the project itself is actually generating less traffic volume than we had projected. So during the weekday evening peak hour and Saturday midday peak hour, we're somewhere between fifteen to twenty percent less trips than we had projected and planned for, which, for, for this board and the city, I believe is a good thing. Um, it means that the mitigation program that we had identified and are implementing is adequate to accommodate the, the project itself. You know, we've also been out there kind of watching operations and haven't seen anything notable. Um, and in our discussions with the city, they haven't raised any major concerns. Um, one, uh, or I guess kind of two, two items for the other conditions that we needed to review. Um, one, as I mentioned, was a review of potential left turns into the driveways along Old Ferry Road. Um, so people that would be traveling south and turning into the Market Basket. Um, the condition actually asked us just to continue to review and monitor these left turns to make sure they weren't inhibiting any through traffic that was also traveling south on Old Ferry. Um, so again, we've been out there and looking at the counts. We don't see any, um, any major issues caused by these left turns and feel that, um, you know, the location of the driveways, access to and from them is generally favorable and consistent with how we projected operations to be as part of the traffic study itself. Um, and then the last piece that we looked at was, as part of the project, there used to be a westbound U-turn option along Pawtucket Boulevard between the Rourke Bridge and Old Ferry Road, so that U-turn option was closed. They built the median along that to eliminate that. Um, so we've been monitoring U-turns, which are actually restricted at the Old Ferry and Pawtucket intersection, just to make sure that there's no, um, illegal kind of movements happening due to the closure of that U-turn. Um, based on, again, based on the traffic counts, there was a very minimal, I think, two, two and five vehicles making that move, um, which is what, you know, we had kind of seen out there previously. Um, so we don't feel that the closure of the U-turn has caused any additional kind of illegal movements at the signal itself. And then the last piece that's documented in the memo was something that we actually, isn't a specific condition of approval, um, but the city staff had noted to us that there were some concerns with potential cut-through traffic associated with the Market Basket development in the Townsend, Malden streets just to the, the east of the project. Um, so we actually conducted traffic counts for those same time periods, so on a Thursday and Saturday, um, and looking at, you know, the evening and Saturday midday peak periods to understand traffic volumes at four intersection locations over in that area. Um, what we found is the volumes along those roadways are relatively minimal. Um, we didn't see any, you know, a significant increase in traffic volumes, um, you know, as part of the project, but that's something that we are sensitive to. We understand that's a residential neighborhood. Um, and, you know, we'll continue to work with the city as other concerns may be raised. Um, and again, continue to monitor those locations as part of subsequent monitoring periods, um, which we're required to do yearly for the next four years at this point. So at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman and the board.
Thank you. Any of the board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure, Mr. Fichette.
Just, uh, so your work wasn't wasted. This is the, this is the original traffic study. This is the original traffic study.
Thank you. We had a number of those. Glad you held on to them.
You're not going page by page, Jerry.
Yeah, I know. How much time do you have? Uh, the Bruins are on tonight. But, you know, in the, so one of, one of the, um, one of the concerns I have, and, and, you know, I'll be honest with you, I was involved in a traffic study that was done in the early two thousands. David Friend, matter of fact, was, I was part of the, um, RFP team that reviewed the submittals that came in. And it was really to deal with that whole sensitive area, but I call it a slice of a pie, right?
Yep.
With Vanamav and Pawtucket Boulevard being out, you've got Lowell General Hospital, you know, one of the largest employers in the area. You've got all of the nursing homes, you add all of that together, quite a large amount of people at shift change. And then we've added the, the Market Basket, and you have all those intersecting streets. And prior to the Rourke Bridge, and I live in my childhood home, so, I'm sounding like, you know, an old Lowellian. But, um, prior to the Rourke Bridge, honestly, those streets never really saw any traffic because everybody was coming from the Old Donald Bridge. And then you were taking Vanamav, or you were taking Pawtucket Boulevard, you didn't crisscross. So obviously, you know, sensitive, it's, it's a very sensitive area, and that residential area could easily be swallowed up. You know, with, with the hospital on one side and influence of business on the other. So obviously, that's the delicate part of it. I have a little bit more of a better understanding of what's going on and the sensitivity of the, the ecosystems that we say of, of the area. And originally, Townsend Ave was not part of your, your traffic study.
That's correct.
So, um, what I would find, two things, I would find helpful in the future traffic studies that you present to us is if you could compare, you know, a summary of the numbers from the prior traffic study, that would be helpful, you know, to see what's going on. I see, you, you see them, and then you sum it up, but, but, you know, we get a traffic study, but I'd like to have some context with it, that would be helpful. And then what I'm trying to understand, when I look at Townsend Ave, and I, it's, it, you're counting cars from the south, going south, from the south, so I'm, it's, it's from the south. If you could explain that to me, because it's, it's, what the concern is, is that, and this is why I was a proponent of the roundabout, is the roundabout will keep the flow of traffic going. And, and honestly, the traffic lights haven't been that bad, but when we're looking at the future, when you're looking at the coffee shop, you're looking at a four-lane bridge, you're looking, right? So that whole character of that particular roadway starts to change if you've got traffic light versus keeping the flow and vehicles not wanting to sit at that traffic light, cutting on, and that would be the last street you could, you could do that on.
Yes.
So, well, I just want to make sure we're getting the direction from Vanamav to Pawtucket Boulevard. And I couldn't figure out from the way this was written. And then the other thing is, because it says you counted left-hand turns off of Townsend. You can't take a left-hand turn because you come out on Pawtucket Boulevard. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand that, because when you come out, you, you right at Pawtucket Boulevard and, you know, the awful movement and, and I walk every night after supper, and I'll, I'll be honest with you, I see more cars backed up than what you counted here, so I'm, I'm not quite sure what's going on. But the, the awful movement is cars coming out of that road and going across to Pawtucket Boulevard to get into the left-hand lane to turn on the Rourke Bridge. That's a whole other issue. But, um, you know, I, I just think it's going to be important to try to capture what's going on there. And I'd like to understand that direction. I, I, it was unclear, from the south, if it's from the south?
We, so I apologize for the confusion.
If you give me direction of what, yeah, because I'll be honest, I've lived there all my life. I'm looking at maps and go, from the south, is it, what direction?
I apologize. We can definitely clarify that in the next study. Um, if you had a chance to look in the attachments, there's actually figures showing the volumes, which may be helpful to review.
Oh, yeah.
But I can summarize those, so.
Yeah.
The specific intersections we looked at within the neighborhood were Varnum at Townsend, Townsend at Malden.
I've got your work sheet.
Okay, perfect. Um, so we looked at, you know, traffic in, in both directions through that neighborhood, um, and I believe that was probably just a typo in the memo itself. Um, but, you know, looking at the left-hand turn, um, so from Varnum to Townsend, so vehicles that would be traveling southbound, that was about thirty vehicles.
See, but then you've got from the south from Lexington. Lexington's a one-way from Pawtucket Boulevard to Vanam. So you can't go in the same direction you're going on Townsend. That's what I can't understand when I'm looking at this.
Yep, so we were, you know, we were mostly concerned with the, the volume on Townsend.
No, no, I understand, but from the direction. So Lexington Ave is a one-way from Pawtucket Boulevard to Vanam. But yet, you're still counting cars from the south. And you say Townsend Ave, you're counting cars from the south. Well, if that's the case, you're counting cars from Pawtucket Boulevard going to Vanamav. That's not the count we want, because we want cars that are going down Vanamav, don't want to sit, sit at that traffic light and cut across Pawtucket Boulevard. So I, I couldn't figure out what you were doing.
Yep, so we, we did collect volumes in both directions.
Okay.
On Townsend itself, so looking at the volume coming from Varnum, um, that would head south to Pawtucket, um, which is the, the move, I believe, you're indicating itself.
Right.
And so that move, we found, was about thirty vehicles during the weekday evening peak hour and the Saturday kind of midday peak hour.
If, um, yeah, would be helpful if we have, if staff can be told when, when the, when the traffic study will be performed the next time, because I'm, I am just, I walk it on a regular basis, and I was still scratching my head looking at it. Like I said, I, uh, that movement at, and during the week after dinner, and I know it's, although you started from four-thirty, it's a little early, I think, but.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it, you may want to adjust the time on that.
Yep.
Um, because, I mean, that's the crucial thing we're trying to capture there.
Exactly.
Um, and I, I really, I really would like to have a better, better presentation on what's going on there.
Okay.
Um, and then, secondly, if you could look at, and this is more antecdotally, and, um, my son-in-law almost got wiped out, um, is your first drive coming out onto Old Ferry from Pawtucket Boulevard?
Yeah.
Turns out, when I look at that on paper, that looked like it was plenty of clearance. It's actually kind of close to that intersection. So when you've got, you know, cars that, matter of fact, they're starting to form two lines heading from Old Ferry to Pawtucket Boulevard, you're starting to, people getting into the left-hand, you know, trying to left-hand side, going straight to, to go to the Rourke Bridge, and people trying to take a left out of that, that first drive, and you got cars turning right in from Pawtucket. Just take a look at that. I, I just thought that was interesting. Like I said, on, on paper, it looked like it was plenty of distance, but it's pretty tight. That's, that's, you got a lot, lot going on. The second drive is perfect. I always exit the second.
That one. Probably most people that have started to lay the land do the same.
Well, you know, traffic engineers, right? If it's unsafe, people won't take it.
Yeah.
I, I, I beg to differ with that movement, but, um, but I don't know, that's, Amy, it's great. This is the whole idea, we're doing this for five years. I just, my concern is, and it would be tough, we're coming out of COVID. You know, I, it's just tough how the, and I know you guys have been trying to deal with that, saying, look, we want to give you real numbers. But, you know, that's a challenge. Like I said, your projections were down, but there's a lot of external factors that played into that.
Yes.
Um, I will tell you, though, all my friends, coworkers from other parts of the city have all come to visit that Market Basket, and they, they particularly like it, so, which is a good thing. It is, it's, you did, you did a great job with it, so it looks great. Um, I just, if you could incorporate these items in, in the next traffic study, and I think as we go forward, to try to capture that data. It's just, just, just try to respect how sensitive those side streets are with the business influence. And there will not be a determination of direct, you know, did a Market Basket truck go down the street? No, it's, the idea is, what the concern was, is by the traffic mitigation of that light.
Yes.
Was that going to then encourage people, say, you know what, I can get, I don't have to wait at that light. I can take a, matter of fact, this is the movement you see all the time. I can take a left onto Townsend, I can turn into the Brunswick Bowling Alley, right? And don't have to wait for the cars there and pull right out and, and go in. So that's what we're trying to capture.
Yep.
All right, good.
If, if I may just summarize to make sure I, I got everything. Um, so our next monitoring effort will be in October, 2023. Um, so we're happy to contact city staff prior, just to let you guys know that we'll, we'll be out there collecting counts. Um, we'll continue to look at the neighborhood, particularly that southbound move on Townsend. Um, and our count periods, we usually look at from four to six PM. Um, so I believe that captures the kind of four-thirty window that you had indicated.
Well, yeah, you, no, you've got four-thirty here. So what I will tell you is, I'm, honestly, I'm walking there almost every night at around five-thirty, six o'clock. And that's when people have a chance to get home, and then they're moving. I mean, I see cars backed up at Townsend, turning onto Boulevard, or cutting through the parking lot. And that's why, if you look at that, that's why the zoning board of appeals years ago, you see those, um, Jersey barriers or, I don't know, backside of Brunswick. years ago, you see those Jersey barriers, rather on the backside of Brunswick, that was because of that issue. And they made that a condition because they wanted to paint the place, they support, you know, on the side of the building, but they took that as an opportunity to make that a condition to restrict it. It's been recognized as a, as an issue, and obviously, now, we're creating a destination to encourage people to.
Yes. So, we will, we'll collect that data, we'll do a comparison back to previous data for you, and make sure that's kind of clearly spelled out in the memo.
Okay, good, no, I appreciate that. Again, it's work in progress, and I figured we'd have to kind of work through it, especially with the first one. And initially, that wasn't part of the, the traffic study as well, so I understand that. So, good, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other board members have any questions? No? No? Bob, any question?
No.
Nope. Okay, thank you very much.
I, I, I have a question.
Who's that?
Hi, I'm Debbie Valanzer, and.
Okay.
I'm rep, I'm representing the Petucketville Citizens Council, and I too live in Petucketville, and I drive Old Ferry Road every single day, and I drive Vonham every single day, and I think the traffic light is working really well for us at the end of Old Ferry Road. Time will tell, once the bridge is, you know, put in and things like that, that we, it will be good to see these numbers. How do we get a copy of these numbers?
You should be able to get a copy of that through planning staff. They would have a copy.
So, I can, I can call them and get a copy?
Sure, we, we receive them, they have it, you can call planning staff, and they should be, they have a copy for you.
Okay, great, because I want to bring it back to the membership.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak for a minute.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
There's another question.
Actually, I'm also waiting to get in.
Hello?
Yes, I'm also waiting to get in.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. All right, so I, I live on Townsend Ave.
Do we have your name and address, if I recall, please?
Yep, Deb Ford Gione, and I live on Townsend Ave.
Thank you.
And I have pictures and videos of the traffic on the street. That's a real issue, and I'm not really sure who chooses the times of days, but there should be different times of days in different days, especially like in the mid-afternoon, you're doing 4:30 to 6:00, which the street is closed off for two hours between 4:00 and 6:00. So, you're doing a traffic study during a time where the street, you can't go down the street between 4:00 and 6:00. And I do think we were also told that we were going to have traffic counts daily to see how it changed, because it is being used as a cut-through. So, we do, we have trucks cutting through, we have cars cutting through, and because the street's only 15 feet wide, if a, if a school bus goes down, and then a car goes down, someone has to get, someone has to stop, someone has to pull over, and then also on the street where the apartment building is, people park on the street, so if you're parked on the street and someone's going down the street, you can't turn around and go up the street. So, there are so many more challenges to the street that I just don't think of being addressed, and I would be glad to meet with the traffic engineer and go over all the issues that we're talking about to make the study more expansive and to actually, what's going on seven days a week during the day, seven days a week, and then from the morning with the school traffic until the end of the day. So, there's many more issues than what that traffic count is addressing, and I do remember us talking about doing a traffic count and not just sectional. We were going to do it for the whole week, every day, to see how much cut-through traffic we now have because of that. But I do have a couple of videos and pictures and issues that have been going on. So, I don't know if anyone wants me to reach out to them, and I can share all that information with them. I'd be glad to do it.
Thank you for sharing that information. You know, at, at this time, we had only done the single day, looking at those specific periods, but noting your concerns, I believe, you know, in the next monitoring effort, we may be able to expand those counts to capture those times a day that you noted and to have a, a further understanding of volumes, as well as a differentiation between car traffic and truck traffic, too.
Yeah, but not to cut you off, but the, the times that you chose, there, you can't enter between 4:00 and 6:00. So, of all, of the, you know, 12 hours of that day, when you did the counts and you just submitted them, between 4:00 and 6:00, you cannot go downtown then between 4:00 and 6:00. So, you were there right when you couldn't go down.
Yep, so that, those times are initially chosen to be consistent with the specific time periods we looked at for the study, but as you noted, not the most appropriate when we're considering Townsend itself and that neighborhood, so something we can definitely work to improve on the, the count times in the next monitoring effort.
Well, I'm available if you want to reach out. I live there, and I don't know who wants me to provide the video and the photographs, but I'd be glad to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Okay. Thank you. Board members all set, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
You, too. Moving along on the agenda, do we have any further comments from any of the board members?
Starbuck was been very quiet. Our next meeting is May 9.
May 9, okay. Anybody else have any further comments? If not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion being second, all in favor, say aye. Chair votes, yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Good night, and thank you very, very much, everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, that was the other thing, it's posted from the city. It's like, we, yeah. Now I gotta carry this stuff back home. When I retire, I'll be, I'll, I have a lot of paper to light, to fire in my wood stove.